We'll give it just another minute or so. This hearing of the House Environmental Resource and Energy Committee will now come to order. Mary, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Evan, would you take the role?
Vitale.
Present.
Brown. Fleming.
Here.
Hohenstein.
Here.
Isaacson.
Here.
Kazim. Atten. Piele.
Here virtually.
Rivera. Salisbury.
Here.
Siegel. Leave. Steele. Leave. Takehak. Webster. Raider. Leave. Bashline. Leave. Day. Leave. I'm sorry, online. Flick. Leave. James. Leave. Mahaffey. Leave. Pew. Present online. Schmidt. Leave. Schaefer. Leave. Stender. Leave. Twardzik.
Present online.
Wentling. Here.
Okay, thank you all for coming. This is a public hearing on the topic of the abandonment of oil and gas wells and tangentially House Bill 364, which attempts to address that. According to the Department of Environmental Protection, estimates there are up to 560,000 abandoned and orphaned gas wells in Pennsylvania. Abandoned wells cause problems such as the leakage of methane, which is a powerful greenhouse gas, gas migration into occupied structures, which causes the risk of explosion, water supply impacts, groundwater impacts, air pollution impacts, soil and groundwater contamination, among other negative consequences. A 2022 DEP report described the abandoning of conventional oil and gas wells as almost a routine business practice. According to DEP statistics, up to 1,154 wells have been abandoned since 2020. And a representative from the Oil and Gas Program can expand on that a bit. 1,154. In the two and a half years of the Shapiro administration, it is estimated that as of about a month ago, 308 wells have been plugged. So 308 have been plugged in the past two and a half years, but 1,154 wells may have been abandoned since 2020. So wells are currently being abandoned at a rate more than double the amount they're being plugged. The DEP Oil and Gas Program needs additional help. DEP testimony today will indicate they have need of more field inspectors, more inspection people, more permitting geologists, more help in the office of Chief Counsel. In 2015, the Oil and Gas Program, full complement was 226 people. Now they are down to 190. DEP, in my view, needs more help. The Environmental Quality Board was stripped of its authority to increase bonding amounts for conventional wells, which would help secure their plugging in 2002. House Bill 364 would restore the authority of the Environmental Quality Board to adjust this bonding. Today, we have a panel of quality speakers. First of all, we have Kurt Kaplowski, head of the Oil and Gas Program for the Department of Environmental Protection. We have Ted Botner, senior researcher from the Ohio River Valley Institute. We have Adam Pelz, director and senior attorney from the Environmental Defense Fund. We have Melissa Ostroff, Pennsylvania Policy and Field Advocate for Earthworks. We have Tyler Martin, environmental care coordinator from Cameron Energy Company. And last, we have John Quigley of the Kleinman Center Senior Fellow, University of Pennsylvania, but more importantly, former secretary of the Department of Environmental Protection and former secretary of the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Our hearing format will follow the usual. Each speaker will be given up to eight minutes to present his remarks. There will be a total of 15 minutes for the speaker, including that eight minutes, for questions from the panel. When we have multiple panels, as we, multiple people today in panels, we will accumulate this time. Again, we will try to accommodate all members' questions, but we will try to stick to the timeframe, so if a member's question cannot be gotten to in the timeframe, that member will be given priority with regard to the next speaker. Before we begin, does the ranking member of the Republican side, it might be Rep. Twardzik today, have any opening comments or remarks?
I think it might be me, and I do not, so thank you.
Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry. Sure, you do not, okay. We can ask Rep. Twardzik anyway, if he wants to. Okay, with that, we will begin our presentation with Kurt Kaplowski from the Department of Environmental Protection. Kurt, thank you again. You come up here and endure us with some frequency, but we really appreciate your coming up here today. So, thank you again.
Of course, Mr. Chairman. Oil and gas is a matter of some significant interest in the Commonwealth, and so it's my honor and privilege to be able to come here and speak with you all. Just going to set my timer. Some of you who have experienced my speaking in the past know that I could probably talk about this for eight hours instead of eight minutes, so I'm going to try to limit my remarks. I think based on the panel today, my role here today is to give some perspective from the Department of Environmental Protection in terms of the issue which we're talking about here today, proper abandonment of oil and gas wells in the Commonwealth, both conventional and unconventional, as well as the industry's record of compliance with those requirements and potential approaches to address those issues. I'm not going to get into it too much this morning, but there has been a long history of oil and gas development in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. A significant portion of that development occurred before the advent of modern statutes, really in the 1950s was the first time. So we had about a century of relatively unregulated development. There was a recent report that was issued by some federal agencies, as well as some academic researchers, which projected around 340,000 unidentified abandoned wells in Pennsylvania based on that record, as well as the records that the department has in our possession at this point in time. The modern environmental statute, of course, was the 1984 Oil and Gas Act. And that act requires operators to plug wells that were not used to produce, extract, or inject gas, petroleum, or other liquid within the preceding 12 months, or from which equipment necessary for production was removed. So in 1984, that was really the first time that we had a modern plugging statute that came into effect. And so that was really the start of what we're talking about here. There are significant public health and safety threats relating to improper abandonment of wells. The idea of plugging a well is to stop the vertical flow of fluids through the wellbore. If you think about a well, it's drilled in order to extract hydrocarbons from the subsurface, and they're very good at that. That technology is very good. But what that also means is that hydrocarbons and brines can move up and down the wellbore, and if the materials aren't contained in those producing formations through proper plugging, they can continue to move through those wellbores. And over time, these wellbores deteriorate and can cause public health and safety threats, which I think all the speakers will go into some detail here today, including methane migration, which has led to explosive situations, groundwater contamination, drinking water contamination, surface water contamination, soil contamination, and emission of methane, which is noted a potent climate forcer. I think what I'd really like to do, we've provided testimony, and I think there's a lot of good information in there about how this works and how the Commonwealth really serves as what I call like the pluggler of last resort. So as wells are improperly abandoned, or in some cases orphaned, and those were wells that were drilled but not operated after 1984. In 1992, those rules changed, which relieved those operators of plugging liability. Really, that responsibility falls to the Commonwealth to do that work. And we do have funding through permit surcharges. It's not a lot of funding. We tend to use that money for emergencies, but we have received significant amounts of funding recently from the federal government under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and I'll talk about that a little bit as well. One of the things that I think is really critically important is defining the problem. There's a lot of speculation about what these numbers might look like. And so locating and documenting abandoned wells is really a critical thing for us, and it's something that we're investing in significantly using our Infrastructure Act funding. I'm happy to say that in January, we entered into a contract with Harrisburg University and Indiana University of Pennsylvania to digitize and, to your reference, old maps that contain information. Some of these, some cases, these are old mine maps. If you think about the old room and pillar mining, you had a pillar around an oil or gas well that penetrated that workable coal seam, and some of those wells weren't reported to the department, but they're included on those mine maps. There are also what we call farm line maps, old USGS maps that indicate oil and gas facilities, and those really do predate that 1950s statutory scheme. And since they started their work in February, they've processed more than 2,800 maps, and they've identified around 31,500 what we call well features on those maps. And we've done a preliminary analysis of that, and we've looked for where they, against our database, and tried to match within 100 feet, and only around 6,500 of those data points actually match within 100 feet of something that's already in our database. So I think optimistically, we could say there's potentially 25,000 undocumented wells that have been uncovered by this work, which would be, you know, I think, for the cost of what we're, it's a $350,000 contract, I think that's, you know, honestly, a spectacular success. And we're starting to work now through going through ground truthing those, to actually go out to the sites, determine if there is a well, what its location is, and what its condition is. I'd like to turn now to some of the reporting requirements that we have, because these really are sort of like early warning systems for the agency in terms of whether a well may potentially be abandoned or not. And we have two sets of recording that oil and gas operators, reporting that oil and gas operators are required to do, mechanical integrity reporting, and this is where, under our regulations, operators do self-checks of their wells and then report those conditions to the agency. It's an annual report for conventional operators and unconventional operators, although unconventional operators are required to report more information. In our testimony, we kind of pointed out some of the failures to report in this area, and this is really important because, again, this is the self-check, but I do think it tells an interesting story of really an industry that really consists of two pieces, and I'm really focusing on the conventional oil and gas operators here. When you look at the data, only about 13% of operators in 2024 actually submitted this data, but they operated 77% of the wells. So the vast majority of wells are actually getting reported on, but the number of operators that do the reporting is actually fairly low, and I think that has to do with the fact that we have around 3,000 operators that what we call consumptive use or home use operators. And this is where you have maybe a natural gas well that provides heat and hot water to a house, and that's the only well that that operator actually has, is that one home use well. And so I think a lot of the numbers that you're seeing there, the failure to report, actually are smaller operators, these home use operators. And the one thing that I also wanted to point out, and we didn't include it in our testimony, we actually went back and we looked at our numbers for 2023 versus 2024, and I'm happy to report that around, we've increased those numbers by about 10% across the board. Only 66% of wells were submitted last, in 2023, and 76 were submitted for 2024. So I did want to call that out as something that's fairly important. Turning to the production data reporting, and again, this is important because, as I mentioned, 12 months without production means the well's abandoned and it needs to be plugged. It kind of tells a very similar story. Around 77% of the wells have production reported, but only 15% of the operators. Again, this is another, these numbers have increased about 10% year over year, so I think that that's a good story, honestly. And again, I'm thinking, looking at the numbers, that it's probably mostly the smaller operators, the 85% that aren't reporting, because they only control 23% of those oil and gas wells. So it's kind of a mixed bag when it comes to reporting. I also wanted to talk a little bit this morning about the abandonment numbers that the chairman mentioned in the opening remarks, as well as some of our enforcement efforts to address that. I see that I'm coming up close on my eight minutes, so I'll try to do this.
You know, I'm going to invoke chairman's privilege and let you go.
Okay, well, I'll try to keep it relatively brief. And I know that the people who are watching this from DP are probably rolling their eyes right now about me keeping anything brief, but I did want to talk a little bit about the numbers in terms of abandonment and our enforcement, there's the timer right there, and our enforcement efforts to try to address those issues. And it's actually, honestly, a little bit worse, Mr. Chairman, than the numbers that you gave. We started this conversation back in 2022, and so at that time, we were looking back five years. So the data that we've been collecting and analyzing on this issue goes back to January 1st, 2017. And since that time, I can say that the number of wells that we believe that have been identified as abandoned since 2017 is actually around 3,100 wells. And what we tried to do as a result of that analysis, I'm sorry, we tried to do an analysis as a result of seeing those numbers to try to find out if we possibly could about when those wells were actually abandoned. So we went through a series of steps analyzing this data, and as a result of going through those steps, we believe that around 1,608 wells have been abandoned since January 1st, 2017. And there's a number of different reasons for why we believe that in terms of production reporting or actual site inspections by DP inspectors. We think that 530 of those wells appear to have been abandoned before 2017, but identified through our inspections after 2017, and around 970 of those wells were identified after 2017, but the precise date of abandonment is unknown based on the data that we were able to actually analyze as part of that process. So again, I think, you know, you'll probably hear a little bit about whether this is a historical problem or an ongoing problem, and I think that the data that we have, it appears that these are actually, this is actually an ongoing problem. I think we can argue about the intensity of the problem or the scope of the problem, but I don't think it's something that we can say is strictly an historical issue and is not continuing today. Another sort of data point that's important about that is about 2/3 of those wells have no bonds whatsoever, and that's a result of the fact that in 1997, legislation was adopted that excused operators of wells that were drilled before 1984 from having to even have the $2,500 and $25,000 blanket bonds. So the department actually returned bonds in the 1990s to operators because of that legislative change in 1997. So 2/3 of those 3,100 are wells that have no bond that we're able to actually forfeit in order to be able to try to do some cost recovery, if you will, on the plugging of those wells. Last thing that I want to turn to, and I'm happy to answer any questions, there's a lot of information in our data, our testimony about some of the federal funding and what we're doing with that, and there is one thing that I want to mention about that, but I do want to turn to the enforcement quickly. We did include some enforcement statistics in our testimony, and I do think that we are trying to be as aggressive as we possibly can to address these issues. I mean, obviously, enforcement is a time-consuming, resource-consuming problem. As the chairman mentioned, you know, if we have more resources, we could do more of that, obviously. I think there's no, there's no secret around that, but we have been really trying to be a lot more aggressive in terms of forfeiting bonds, in terms of issuing orders, in terms of issuing civil penalty assessments. We recently issued three orders to operators for around 900 wells, of those wells that aren't reporting anything, requiring reports. Two of those orders require integrity reports by July 1st, and the production reports by August 1st, and the third order, because the way it's structured, does give that operator a little bit more time to do those reports. So historically, that's been considered an administrative violation, and so it's relatively low priority, but we are dedicating resources now to try to attack that, those 23,000 wells that aren't reporting integrity or production reports going forward. I did want to mention, and it's not in our testimony, but I know it's been raised outside of this room, certainly relating to unconventional wells being improperly abandoned. We currently have 117 unconventional wells in our database that we've recorded as being improperly abandoned. We've issued notices of violation to all those operators. 88 of those wells are under consent order, and four have been plugged. The other 25 wells are in process for enforcement right now. 15 of those are in the approval process with documentation. process with documents drafted. The other 10 have been issued NOVs and are going to be moving through that process. So we're, we're trying not to duplicate the problems of the past with the unconventional industry, and we're staying on top of that very aggressively. The last thing that I want to mention, and I do appreciate your forbearance, Mr. Chairman, in allowing me a little bit more time, but I think it's an important point to make. Under the initial grant, under the Infrastructure Act, we received $25 million, and we plugged more than 220 wells. The cost per well for those, for those projects ran around $110,000. And I know we've received a lot of criticism, both in this forum as well as outside, for the high cost of that plugging. And I'm happy to say that we did receive the Formula Grant, Phase 1, last year of $76 million, and we have started moving contracts through that process. There are two contracts where we've issued notice to proceed on, in McKean and Jefferson and Clarion Counties. And the, the current cost per well is somewhere around $69,000 for those contracts. So that's a significant cost reduction. It's about $40, $45,000 less than what we saw in the initial grant. And another data point that I think is important, we're working with our partners in the Forest Service to plug wells in the Allegheny National Forest. And there's a contract in Warren County that we've issued for 18 wells to plug, and that, that contract came back at $45,000 per well. So I do think that, that the initial grant is going to be a blip in terms of the cost to plug these wells. And some of that has to do with the timeframes that we had to operate in and the way those contracts were structured. The very last thing I'll say, and then I'll yield back to you, Mr. Chairman, is we do have a well-plugging request for proposals open right now, and operators can, can come in and submit proposals to be, to be contractor for the Commonwealth going forward. We're pretty excited. That's a historic change. In the past, we only used invitation for bids, and that's a responsible low bidder process. With the request for proposals, we can accept innovative proposals. We've had some folks approach us about using carbon credits to plug these wells at no cost to the Commonwealth, which I think is an exciting prospect. But that is open until June 26th, so I would suggest that if you know anyone who might be a qualified well plugger, please, you know, tell them to go to eMarketplace and take a look at that request for proposals and submit something. So with that, I will, I'll stand down and accept any questions from the committee. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Kurt. And, and although I have a lot to say, you know, typically about the oil and gas program, I do want to note, I, I really appreciate the, the great job you and the oil and gas program and the DEP generally does, given your resource constraints. It's, don't, don't misinterpret, you know, constructive criticism for, you know, disapproval. I certainly appreciate what you do.
We're only human. We're not perfect. I will say, I will say that the folks in the, I think, I've spent my entire career at DER and DEP, and the folks in the Office of Oil and Gas Management are the, are the hardest-working, finest people that I've had the pleasure and privilege of working with. I like to say we're the kind of, we're the kind of people that run towards the fire instead of away from it. And, and the people who come to work in oil and gas are there because they believe in the mission of the agency and they believe in the mission of the office. And they're dedicated to environmental professionalism and protection. So I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, and the people of the Commonwealth should be grateful. So thank you. So we will reset the question clock for seven minutes, and I will take the first question. You had mentioned in your written testimony, page two, I'll just sort of quote some of it, "Ensuring proper abandonment of conventional wells will require additional resources, especially in the brew of district oil and gas operations, in particular, field inspectors, enforcement personnel, such as compliance specialists, permitting geologists, and the Office of Chief Counsel." Can you, can you, I know this is going to be hard, and I know you want not to do it, but, but could you just maybe thresh out numbers a little bit? Like what, what, you know, how, how many of each would be helpful?
Well, I think, at the end of the testimony, actually, we do have some information there about a particular situation. I think we're, you know, sort of outlining some of the difficulties for our oil and gas inspectors, particularly in terms of determining that these facilities actually exist, what the status of them is, determining if they're a responsible parties. Excuse me, that requires courtroom work, courthouse work in some cases, if a lease was recorded or something like that. So I think that the bottom line here is, we could always do more with more, right? I don't think there's any, any, any secret about any of that. I do think that, if you look at the enforcement numbers that we've, that we've been able to generate, I think we're doing a lot with what we already have. Honestly, I don't, I can't really give you a number in terms of like what would be appropriate. I think, you know, as you mentioned.
It helps, it's helpful when we're crafting a budget.
I, I understand. And we have actually, we have actually asked for $19 million as part of, as part of this budget. Basically, to keep, that's, that's a keep the lights on and the doors open kind of a, a budget line, I think, as well as supporting the important well-plugging work that we're doing. Honestly, I don't really know what that, what that number would end up looking like. And part of that is going to be based on the goal, honestly. Like if, if the goal would be to issue 30 administrative orders next year instead of, instead of the numbers that we have in, in this report, you know, you can do, that's easy math to do. It's, I think it's three, I think we issued 10 administrative orders last year for well abandonment. So three times, right? And, and that is, it really is a team effort. And I, and I think that that's something that I'd like to stress is that it involves the oil and gas inspector generally doing that initial work. It involves a compliance specialist assisting them in drafting those enforcement documents. Then it involves attorneys reviewing that work and defending it if, if we end up with getting appeals. So it is, it's, it's not, it's not quick, it's not easy, it's not cheap. And again, I think part of it really depends on what goals you're setting in terms of where we need to be.
Okay. Thank you. Rep. Hellenstein?
Thank you, Chair. And, and thank you for coming. I appreciate getting your perspective. I also serve on the Fish and Game Committee as well. And so we've heard from the Game Commission in particular. I know Fish and Boat has a very small number of leases that they have in this area. But the Game Commission has a fairly significant amount. And when we've discussed with them where the funds go for those leases, and they've discussed some cooperative programs with DEP on that, I'd like to hear your perspective on that program, the size of it, and whether there's, there's any viability in looking to expanding some of that work or expanding some of that funding by effectively either requesting or requiring the Game Commission to, to, you know, increase its, its contribution in that area.
I'll try to answer that in two ways. The first is, we have a very good working relationship with the Pennsylvania Game Commission, and I'm happy about that and I'm proud of that. We're actually working with one of the later testifiers, EDF, with the Game Commission up in the northwestern part of the state. And they've been great. They're a great partner to work with, as well as DCNR. And so it, I, I certainly want that to continue, and I'd like to expand that as much as we can. The second thing I'll say about it is that, under the Infrastructure Act, there is a, there's a matching grant program. And the federal government will match states, state-level expenditures up to $30 million. If we present them a budget for the next year that shows we're going to be spending more than we spent in the last decade per year to plug wells, and we, that number's around 1.3 million. So if we spend more than 1.3 million in a fiscal year or project to spend more, we can go to then the Department of the Interior and request additional funding back from them up to that $30 million total.
And, and so if we in the state made a decision or, or found a way, one way or the other, whether it's administrative or legislative, to increase that funding in any way, and Game Commission funds would be one potential source. You're saying that we can effectively receive matching grants from the feds as well?
That's correct.
So that's, that's, that's good information. Thank you very much.
And we've worked very closely with, I don't know if we've worked with the Game Commission funding projects, but DCNR has certainly funded projects that we've run on state lands.
Okay. Looks like we have, have time for one more questioner. But before we do that, I just wanted to note the presence virtually of Rep. Mahaffey, Rep. Friolotin, Rep. Piale, and Rep. Rivera. And I think for our final questioner would be Rep. Day.
Mr. Chairman, in your testimony, I have constituents who watch these meetings, and it would be greatly helpful if a brief description of the size of these wells, what types they are, and number two, how are they plugged? Are they only plugged for leaking gases, or are there other reasons? So I wanted to keep the question really short, but it could really go a long way in helping me educate my constituents on these matters. Thank you.
So it's a real mix. There are oil wells and gas wells. There are shallow wells and deep wells. We don't necessarily prioritize the plugging of these wells based on the issues surrounding the, the depth of the well or what the well produces. It's typically, we have a worksheet that our inspectors run through to characterize these wells, and it's a combination of the, what's actually happening at the well, what's the character and condition of the well, as well as the proximity to resources that we want to protect, things like surface waters or residences or significant wetlands, those sorts of things. So that's how we score the wells, and that's where we build the projects typically around those, those high-scoring wells. In terms of what, why we plug, there's a couple of reasons that I think are important to mention. As I, as I said, in the Oil and Gas Act, the goal of plugging wells is to, to stop the vertical movement of fluids through that wellbore. So wells are generally drilled to the depth they need to be drilled at to produce that oil or gas, and no farther, because it's expensive to drill wells, and you don't want to drill more than you have to. So typically, it's the bottom formation is, is, is the formation that's producing formation. So you set plugs to try to isolate those materials in that formation as well. And then you set additional plugs above that point in the, in the wellbore based on where the well is located. So for example, in areas that have workable coal seams, there are, there are certain plugs that are set to protect those coal resources so that the coal can then be mined, and miners are protected from the, the movement of those materials. If that bottom plug fails, there's a secondary plug there that would, that's on top of and below the, the coal resources. And I'd say the third piece is really is protecting drinking, drinking water sources, upper-level aquifers, as well as impacts to the surface. I hope that answers the question.
Well, thank.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you for your answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, thank you, Kurt, for coming today. That includes, concludes this segment. Next, we have a, really appreciate coming today, Kurt. Next, we have a, a three-person panel. Ted Botner from the Ohio River Valley Institute, Adam Pelz from National Resource Defense, the Environmental Defense Fund, I'm sorry, and Melissa Ostroff from Earthworks. So please come to the table as, as you'd like. I think we have, okay. Okay, our other two presenters are online. And thank you. And I have no preference as to who goes first, so I'll let you guys decide among yourselves who'd like to go first here. Melissa, why don't you start us off then?
Push the button so it's green.
Yes.
Oh, it's a different shade of green now. Okay. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Melissa Ostroff, and I am the Pennsylvania Policy and Field Advocate with Earthworks. Earthworks' mission is to protect communities and the environment from the adverse impacts of mineral and energy development while promoting sustainable solutions. In my role at Earthworks, I use my education in public health and my training in optical gas imaging to make the impacts of invisible pollution from the oil and gas industry visible to policymakers and the public. This includes pollution from orphaned and abandoned wells. A little over a year ago, I spoke at a hearing held by Chair Vitale on the subject of addressing abandoned oil and gas wells in Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, almost nothing has changed in our Commonwealth since that hearing. Bonding levels for both conventional and unconventional wells remain low enough that, in effect, we do not have financial assurance for oil and gas wells drilled in Pennsylvania today. Pennsylvania residents are paying the price for inaction now, and future generations will pay more if we continue to sit on our hands. The estimated hundreds of thousands of unplugged wells in Pennsylvania continue to represent a threat to both public health and our climate, and more are abandoned improperly every month. We know that unplugged wells not only vent methane, a potent greenhouse gas that heats our planet, but they also release carcinogenic pollutants, including benzene and other volatile organic compounds into the air. This pollution impacts the health of Pennsylvania's children who are living with leaking abandoned wells in their backyards, schoolyards, and parks. Beyond impacting air quality, abandoned wells have also been known to contaminate water and have the potential to cause explosions, as has been discussed. As I mentioned last year, in my fieldwork with Earthworks as a certified optical gas imaging thermographer, I have captured footage of orphaned abandoned wells polluting Pennsylvania's recreational public spaces and backyards, places that no one should have to worry about running into oil and gas pollution. I told you about a teacher named Pam who I met in Forest County. Pam and her husband had resorted to using home insulation in an attempt to plug, quote unquote, plug, a smelly abandoned well in their backyard. You can see the abandoned well and the garden she set up around it in this photo here. Talk about making lemonade. It's been almost four years since I met Pam, and her well has yet to be plugged. Similarly, a complaint I filed for a leaky abandoned well near a public pool in Coubert Sport, Slide 2, has gone unaddressed after almost two years. Last spring, I filmed a leaky well at a public park in Allegheny County and filed a complaint. The well was listed as active by DEP but appeared completely abandoned. Slide 3. An inspection was conducted following my complaint, and DEP issued 10 notices of violation to the operator, including failure to plug the well upon abandonment. After almost a year of following up to ask when the well will be plugged and who will be paying for it, I received this response from a DEP inspector who asked to remain anonymous in reference to ongoing litigation with the operator. I quote, "I have seen these cases go on for years before the operator is removed from the equation. Oil and gas operators are given a consent order to plug unproductive wells. Operators that are active and have an interest in continuing to produce gas as a business comply. In this operator's case, as in some others, it's like getting blood from a rock. There just aren't the funds there. Eventually, there is a settlement, and the state assumes responsibility and plugs the wells," end quote. The problem is that Pennsylvania taxpayers don't have the money to plug all of the, the wells that operators abandon and continue to abandon every month. The Shapiro administration has done an excellent job of leveraging every federal dollar that Pennsylvania has received under the IIJA to plug wells. However, if it wasn't clear a year ago, it's certainly clear now that we cannot rely on taxpayer-funded solutions to this problem. Not only are the funds insufficient compared to the scope of the problem, but they are subject to the whims of politicians in Harrisburg, in Washington. And at the end of the day, taxpayers cannot solve a problem that starts within the industry itself. This is why we need systemic solutions like bonding reform. Earthworks was one of a number of organizations that filed petitions before the EQB to raise bonding levels for oil and gas wells in Pennsylvania in 2021. Shortly afterwards, the Pennsylvania Legislature froze bonding amounts for conventional wells for a decade, keeping more residents like Pam stuck with leaking wells in their backyards. Chair Vitale's legislation, House Bill 364, would prevent more Pennsylvanians like Pam from having to solve a problem that they didn't create. It would ensure that no one ever has to use home insulation to plug a well that a gas company abandoned. But we know it's not just conventional wells that are being abandoned. DEP reports more and more unconventional wells are also being abandoned each month, and we're on a path to repeating the same mistakes with the unconventional industry that we've already seen play out with conventional operators. The legislation that froze bonding levels for conventional wells in Pennsylvania did not stop DEP from issuing a rulemaking to increase bonding for unconventional wells. And yet, it's been more than three years since EQB voted for DEP to issue a report studying the possibility of a rulemaking on unconventional bonding, and we still have not seen that report. Why are we sitting on our hands as this problem continues to balloon? Bonding is one among many possible systemic solutions that could ensure taxpayers are not relied upon to foot the bill for a problem that starts and ends with polluters themselves. A production fee, as outlined in the Ohio River Valley Institute's recent report, is another possible solution that can meet this problem head-on. As the report notes, the cost per unit of production becomes small when spread out across the entire Appalachian Basin. Depending on the scope of the costs intended to be covered by the fund, the costs could range from $0.05 to $0.21 per MCF at today's costs. This proposal is estimated to increase oil and gas jobs by 32% without impacting energy prices or future drilling. And make no mistake, workers are needed to tackle this problem. And make no mistake, workers are needed to tackle this problem. We know that through collaboration with organized labor, well-plugging can increase workforce development and create more union jobs. I was heartened by the Shapiro administration's announcement of a partnership with United Mine Workers of America last year to begin an apprenticeship program that would train workers to plug oil and gas wells. We need more of these partnerships, which turn the enormous problem of abandoned wells in Pennsylvania into an enormous opportunity for Pennsylvania workers. It is my hope that one year from now, I do not have to come back to Harrisburg to say that nothing has changed again, that we're still leaving this up to taxpayers and political whims. I want to be able to proudly say that Pennsylvania has made real progress to address the systemic problem of abandoned oil and gas wells in our Commonwealth, that we've shown how, how other states can get this done, that we have protected the health of Pennsylvania residents like Pam and the futures of our children, that we have a plan to address this problem at the root and put people to work in family-sustaining jobs at the same time. Let's get this done, Pennsylvania.
Perfect. Eight minutes, perfect. Thank you, thank you. And who is next in this panel?
Hello, my name's Ted Betner. I'm happy to go next, if that works.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Great. Well, thank you, Chairman Vitale, and members of the committee for inviting me to testify today. I'm a senior researcher with the Ohio River Valley Institute, where my research and analysis has focused extensively on solving many of the problems with abandoned wells in Appalachia. I think before we get into the issue, it's really important to recognize that the oil and gas has been vital to America's economy and living standards, whether it's providing energy for transportation, manufacturing, and heating, or, or as feedstock for plastics and fertilizers. Natural gas has also been pivotal to renewable energy development and grid stability, providing just-in-time dispatchable power to back up intermittent renewables such as solar and wind power on the electric grid. At the same time, the upstream oil and gas industry has left behind a remarkable amount of environmental damage over the last 165 years, and unfortunately, Pennsylvania is at the epicenter of this. Today, there are an estimated 341,000, from the latest study this year, of undocumented orphaned wells in the state, and there are approximately 27,000 orphaned wells that the state has identified. And there's also about 100,000 conventional wells that are likely to become orphaned in the future unless swift actions taken by state policymakers. The good news, as Melissa shared too, is improving well-abandonment compliance and implementing long-overdue reforms can create thousands of jobs in the oil and gas industry while improving the health, the environment, and property values in our communities. But it's important to realize that it stands today, plugging a well is de facto voluntary unless operators are under a consent order agreement where operators are filling a well to drill a new one. Bonding amounts are so low that they have little to no effect on inducing well-plugging. As far as I'm aware of, the oil and gas industry is the only industry where bonding levels do not match projects. So when you bond, when a company plugs a well, they bond at the full amount of, they have to have bonding at the full amount of that project cost. This isn't true when drilling a well. Moreover, as the culture of non-compliance is pervasive, especially among conventional well owners, to improve abandoned well compliance, there are a number of steps state policymakers and the DEP could consider. This includes a production fee, implementing trust fund accounts, requiring inactive wells to be decommissioned on a deadline, and updating the state's well-management system, along with exist, exercising existing statutory authority, improving the process for plugging orders. So first, and probably the more controversial, is why does Pennsylvania need a production fee on oil and gas? There are several reasons. First, no amount of bonding is going to pay for decommissioning the state's undocumented and documented orphaned wells. And based on current decommissioning costs of about 85,000 per well, this amounts to $31 billion, or to use Kurt's number of 69,000, that's $25 billion. Second, most of the state's conventional wells are likely to become orphaned. Despite making up 86% of the state's active wells, conventional wells accounted for less than 1% of total oil and gas production, or about $200 million in total production value in 2024. Over the next 30 years, the total production value of conventional wells will likely be about $4 billion. This is less than half of what it would take to decommission 105,000 active and abandoned unplugged conventional wells. While instituting higher levels of bonding along with compliance can lead to some operators to decommission their convention wells, the vast majority of these wells are uneconomic and owned by financially unhealthy operators. Third, the DEP needs more resources to enforce well-abandonment compliance and other duties to protect Pennsylvanians from environmental damage. For example, Ohio collected 58 million in oil and gas severance taxes in 2022, and about 90% went to the oil and gas fund to help decommission orphaned wells, and 10% went to geological mapping programs. Another example, in the South, West Virginia collected 556 million in state oil and gas taxes in 2022, along with over 200 million in property taxes, and they used about 1.8 million of this amount to plug abandoned oil and gas wells. Lastly, a severance tax on, or a production fee can improve compliance by incentivizing operators to submit accurate production reports in a timely manner due to tax liability. And that's very important. One of the main reasons we have a problem with compliance is you don't have another agency enforcing that. You don't have that problem as greater in Ohio and West Virginia that have severance taxes. So based on projections from the U.S. Energy Information Administration, Pennsylvania could put about $25 billion back into its economy from a 10-cent MCF fee, or $37 billion from a 15-cent MCF fee from 2025 to 2050, instead of pushing that money out of the state. Secondly, another reform, for new and recently-drilled wells, Pennsylvania could require each well to have a site-specific trust account that includes a surety bond as an insurance backstop. The operator would deposit money into the trust account at the PDP or a third-party government-sponsored entity for the first 15 years of their life, and it would match the anticipated decommissioning costs. These accounts would follow the well for its entire life, ensure that the well is, if it was transferred to other operators, it would still be decommissioned. That's one of the main reasons, ways to help with the transfer of wells that end up being abandoned. So improving compliance. Today, the onus to prove that a well is abandoned seems to fall on the PADP rather than operators. It should be the opposite. The PADP should issue administrative plugging orders to operators that routinely, routinely failed to submit a production report, repurpose their well, or put the well in regulatory active status. Notices of violation for failure to plug should be issued not just during onsite inspections, but administratively. This would expedite enforcement. The PADP should also use its power to deny permits to operators with wells that are not in compliance. A well without a production report for more than two years should be considered abandoned, and appropriate action should be taken. Law enforcement is only as credible as the officer's appetite to enforce the law. Pennsylvania DEP would also.
Ted, you have about a minute.
They would also benefit from automated and centralized data management system. They could consider joining the Groundwater Protection Council's risk data-based data management system to help manage its well inventory and compliance measures. In conclusion, Pennsylvania has a long, successful history of oil and gas production, but has also accumulated hundreds of thousands of unplugged wells and tens of billions of dollars in private equity creating public risk. The problem of funding decommissioning will not be solved by marginal revisions to policies. So it's time to either give up on the objective of proper well abandonment or embrace a path that includes regulatory reform and a targeted fee on the remaining industry that would create jobs while making Pennsylvania a better state to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. Really appreciate your testimony. And finally, in this panel, we have Adam. Would you like to go next, Adam Pelz?
Yes, thank you, Chair Vitale. And I really appreciate being invited to speak today on, on a number of issues related to abandoned wells in Pennsylvania. I've been working on local environmental impacts from oil and gas development around the country since 2011, including a lot of time in Pennsylvania, and I spend almost all of my time on abandoned well issues nationally. Today, I want to tell you about three things. One is an undocumented orphaned well discovery project that we're engaged in with the DEP in Western Pennsylvania. The second is a quick roundup of what other states around the country are doing to try to reduce future orphaned well burden. And then the third is some recommendations for issues to consider to, to try to reduce future orphaned well burden in Pennsylvania. So as to the undocumented orphaned well project, that story starts in 2020, when the pandemic hit and oil prices went negative and oil-filled service workers were out of work, and we and others saw an opportunity to pursue federal stimulus funds for well-plugging. And we teamed up with the Interstate Oil and Gas Compact Commission and the Independent Petroleum Association of America on a bipartisan bill that brought $4.7 billion to bear on this problem, of which Pennsylvania is eligible for around 400 million, so the largest, the largest that any state will receive. That number was based on the documented orphaned well count at the time, but because only a tiny fraction, as we've discussed, of the orphaned and abandoned wells in Pennsylvania are documented, Pennsylvania really got a lot less than it needed. I think that the figures we've been talking about in the tens of billions sound right to me. And so while Pennsylvania and other states have been plugging wells with the money that they've received so far, there, there is a need to understand the full scope of the problem in Pennsylvania, and in fact, find these wells, because as, as we've been saying, they are a public health and safety risk in addition to environmental and, and economic. And so we saw around a year or two ago, an opportunity to leverage some work the Department of Energy has undertaken to find undocumented orphaned wells, in fact, part of that same Infrastructure Act bill, and pilot those techniques in Pennsylvania, instrumented surveys to, to find these wells in different oil and gas, oil versus gas pools, different topographies, land use types, in order to create a roadmap for the DEP to do this work at scale. And so we've been working closely with the DEP, MOMS Clean Air Force, Harrisburg University and Indiana University of Pennsylvania, just like the DEP is, and others, on a project that has three main components. We've been flying drones with magnetometers in Northwest Pennsylvania to find the wells, the magnetometers find the metal casings. We flew eight square miles in Clarion and McKean Counties in the fall and found around 250 likely wellbores. And so that well density corresponds to the 300,000 or 500,000 figure. Those wells are currently being ground-truthed by DEP inspectors. Shortly, we'll be expanding the work to urban Southwest Pennsylvania in Allegheny and Washington Counties. We've selected sites based on where there are open stray gas migration cases, which means that there's gas flowing and it's unclear where it's coming from. It's probably not local distribution because those companies have been out there and couldn't find any pipeline leaks, and, and so it's suspected they're coming from orphaned wells. And we're going to see if we can find them using drones in, in some areas where landowners have requested it, mostly driving cars with methane sensors that, that can do speciation and with backpack magnetometry. So imagine Ghostbuster suits on public roads and sidewalks. You can see wells underneath people's houses this way, and we're going to find as many as we can in these areas. We're holding a series of open houses in the areas where we're going to be doing the work, because it's extremely important to make sure that the public understands what we're doing and why, and can ask any questions. We want to, we don't want to trouble anyone, but we do want to find these wells so that they can be plugged. The last piece of this project is we're working with Penn State Extension and Oil Region Alliance on landowner outreach. Landowners don't, typically don't feel comfortable reporting these wells because they think they might be liable to plug them, which by and large, they're not. And we're going to offer as an incentive, $100 per well bounty for new wells discovered this way, to see if we can scale this work. All of this, we're going to hand over as a roadmap to the DEP to be able to do this work at scale in the coming years with federal funding. It's, this is how we're going to get those tens of billions of dollars into the system. All of that money, pretty much, will go to local oilfield service companies to plug the wells, and will help revitalize the economies in the historic oil patch in western Pennsylvania. So I'm going to go very quickly through what some other states are up to. Texas just passed a bill to limit how long wells can idle in the state, after a series of blowouts and requests for hundreds of millions of dollars from the agency to be able to, to deal with that work. Oklahoma also, their legislature also passed laws limiting well-idling and increasing financial assurance and spending more state money on well-plugging. New Mexico and Utah are both in the middle of major rulemakings to overhaul their financial assurance, idle well management, and well-transfer rules. And Louisiana, after passing idle well regulations a few years ago, a legislative auditor found that they weren't doing nearly enough. The auditor suggested many upgrades, and the agency is now seeing those through. And so there is a lot of state activity on this issue. States have realized, oh, this is bad. This is bad that there are so many wells out there that the public is going to have to pay for. It's not a good look for industry or for anybody, and it's not safe. And so states are taking action on this. For Pennsylvania in particular, I would recommend many things along the lines of what we've heard so far today. Financial assurance proportional to risk and phased in carefully to avoid mass orphaning, limiting the duration as wells can stay idle, and requiring regular integrity testing to make sure those wells don't leak. Well-transfer rules that predicate transfer on a showing of the transferee's ability to meet requirements, ideally backed up through financial assurance. An orphaned and abandoned well closure fund paid for by industry to plug wells not properly and timely, plugged and abandoned by their operators. Continuing and expanding workforce development and apprenticeship programs to bring more people into the plugging and remediation industries to enable the work to proceed at scale. Pilot programs looking at end-of-life wells and sites that can be potentially reused for energy production and storage, including geothermal heat, gravity storage, and the like. And by the way, there's a bill in Congress that would help with this. And then sufficient staffing for the DEP to oversee this work at scale, since it's just so big. And I'll stop there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Adam. Really appreciate your testimony. Questions? I, I know that Rep Fleming had to leave, but he requested if there was a panel member who wanted to perhaps elaborate a little more on the health impacts of the abandonment of wells or leaking wells. Is there any, anything more to be said on the health impacts with regard to this issue? Is any, any speaker?
I could speak briefly to that.
Okay, Melissa.
I know there was a study that came out in the last year or two from PSE Healthy Energy that measured different, and measured and categorized different types of pollutants coming from abandoned wells in Pennsylvania. And in addition to methane, they found and measured benzene, which is a known carcinogen, as well as a few other volatile organic compounds. And I'd be happy to share a link to that study after the hearing, if that's useful. But I think that, you know, understanding what the components are of that pollution helps us to understand potential health impacts that would be associated with it. And that's just the pollution that's breathed in. So that's just through the air. Obviously, groundwater contamination is a problem, and the health risks associated with living close to something that's explosive.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Rep Q, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you so much, and I find this stuff all fascinating. I appreciate hearing that Oklahoma's been doing some stuff. I actually know some senators and legislators there, so I fired off an email to see what they've done, so I can take a look at it. And I can report that back if anybody wants to see it. Everybody knows that, you know, I'm pretty new here. So a lot of times, I find that we're talking about the errors of our ways in the past and trying to play catch-up and correct them now. So I do have a question, because I am a forward-thinking person. Would... Would any of you or all of you hopefully would support bonding and decommission requirements for all energy installations and sources? Because I've traveled, you know, across this country and actually across the world where they use all sorts of renewables and gas and everything that you could possibly think of. And I've seen some catch on fire. I've seen some just decommissioned and laying in fields. I don't want to create the same errors going forward that apparently we've created in our past. So I'm really interested to see what your stance is on those as opposed to just coming down on one industry, do it for all.
Any, any comments? I, I will note that we just passed a bill out of our committee which would impose bonding requirements on the construction of solar arrays by Rep, yeah, Rep Ya. So there's, there's, there's something that may address Rep Yu's questions, but does any other of the testifiers have any, anything to add to bonding with regard to other areas? I know your focus is on oil and gas, but if you have any other thoughts on that, we'd appreciate it.
I think it's fair to say the, the public shouldn't have to pay for any kind of energy decommissioning, whatever it's site.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. Rep Brown? Rep Brown?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. I just had a quick question. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So I heard the last person speaking, they, they referenced or they mentioned that there's going to be $100 incentives for people to report or go out and find wells. Do we think that's enough? And how has that been working out?
So the project's just getting underway. So nothing has happened yet. As to whether it's enough, it's, it's kind of an experiment. At the moment, people don't get anything. And so we want to test the notion that a kind of modest bounty might incentivize people to report once they've had a trust building exercise with, with, with people that they they trust, in this case, Penn State Extension. We have currently $20,000 set aside for those bounties. That would cover 200 wells. If there's great demand, I think we can increase it. I'm not sure how much. It's, it's all philanthropic dollars. So whatever we can get people to donate towards that cause, and we're going to, to see what happens.
Okay.
I'm just, okay.
Thank you. Rep Yeli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And my question is specifically directed to the second speaker of this panel, I believe it's Ted. I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulty, so I didn't get your name. But I believe you mentioned a severance tax and how a severance tax would be helpful to plug these wells and to also fund plugging these wells. I'm well aware that despite the fact that we're the second largest producer in gas, we are the only state or Commonwealth that has this ridiculous impact fee, whereas other states like Texas have a healthy severance per volume fee. So if you could enunciate on that and how exactly that is helping, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I can give you one example. Adam talked about Texas. Texas has, I believe, about 150,000 wells in what's called the regulatory inactive status. Pennsylvania has 250 or 300. And one of the reasons they are able to do that too is they have really good reporting. And to have good reporting, if you have the Department of Revenue coming at you every quarter saying you need to report your production of every well in the state unless you're exempt, you're going to have to report what the production is. You have a separate agency doing that and you have a tax liability and a fee from that and a fine. That can greatly increase the amount of compliance you get, and that's one of the benefits. But the main benefit is, you know, as it stands today, you're not going to be able to plug any of those wells, especially the orphaned wells or the DEP abandoned wells or the undocumented with bonding. It's not going to do anything to impact that. And, you know, being able to have a fee that, that money stays in your state, whereas in Pennsylvania, I think over 80% of all the gas leased leaves the state. Keeping that money local is means more money in your state's economy, which seems to be like, you know, if you want to be a good CEO of your state, that's the goal of the state is to have as much money as you possibly can in your economy changing hands. And also going back into people who live and work there and raise their families and put their kids in schools. So it's a great benefit and most of those states have that severance tax. You know, you can look, is a good example, if West Virginia can do it, it's had, you know, an impact on the production in that state, which we all know that production's based on curves, not taxes. They're just too small to have a major impact. It would have a lot of benefit. And one of the things I just want to say really briefly is if you look at all of the conventional wells, the 76,000 that are producing, and if you, that they decline at 3% a year, whatever, you know, or 2% or 3%, and you add up the entire production value based on forecasted prices, you know, you're not even getting to half of the cost to plug those wells. So that tells you you've got a major, major problem that those wells do not have enough value in them to plug. So if you don't have a fee or something, and it's going to have to come from the large producers who are, you know, who are producing 99% of oil and gas production in the state to do that, unless you want to turn that on to the public or just not do anything about it.
Thank you so much. It's very insightful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more? I'm sorry. Paul Takehak?
Yes, Chairman. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Real quickly, Adam, I was very curious on your, your list of what some of the other states are doing, particularly with Utah, where they apparently are trying to deal with the solvency of operators or, you know, eligibility for the program. First of all, I'd like to know more about that. That would be very helpful as a follow up to sort of understand how they got to that point. But the other question that I had was, is that something that is a potential forward looking solution in Pennsylvania or is that something we should have done decades ago and has resulted in a lot of these, you know, abandoned wells? You know, I'm just wondering, is that something that we could, is that, I guess what I'm saying is, is that going to prevent the proliferation of them or is that a way to go back and deal with the problem as it currently exists today?
Well, I guess I would say, you know, the best time to do something, this is a cliche, is 50 years ago and the second best time to do it is now. And so we should start now. Let me tell you a little bit about what Utah's proposing and how, what the analogs might be for Pennsylvania. So in, in Utah, which has a relatively small and new industry, they don't have a lot of orphaned and abandoned wells right now, but they're going to unless they undertake policy reform. And that was a finding of a legislative audit a few years ago that found that the rules there were insufficient to protect Utah taxpayers from likely future orphan well plugging burden. And so the agency undertook a stakeholder consultation process that's been going on for around two years. EDF has been participating along with the Utah Petroleum Association to explore the issue and figure out what should be done to reform bonds there. The agency came up with a concept that blanket bonds, which is to say, a bond that covers multiple wells, usually at pennies on the dollar. It should be a privilege and not a right based on operator risk. Operator risk is proxy through their production levels and their percentage of wells that are either idle or produce less than a barrel of oil equivalent a day, which is around six MCF a day. They, they made that decision because they realized that highly capitalized operators are not going to orphan their wells, but they might transfer them down the value chain to less capitalized operators. Less capitalized operators are, are likely to orphan their wells and, and that's where the state want, wanted more bonding in place in case that occurred. And they created tiers to try to best risk match the bond amounts. The, I think the real, so first of all, that, that alone is, would be a breakthrough. I think a real insight is, is to require these extremely marginal wells, the ones less than one BOE per day, to have these bonds because it incentivizes operators to plug those wells so that they don't have to hold on to the bonds. I think that, that this could apply to Pennsylvania. As Ted said, a lot of these operators don't have any money and you could put a bond on them and it's not going to do any good. It would certainly clarify where the problems are and, you know, what is going to fall to a public burden and what isn't. The backstop is to have some kind of industry funded plugging fund, whether through a severance tax or some other mechanism to deal with wells that, that have slipped through the cracks. So Pennsylvania is pretty far down the road here and there's going to be a lot of pain. It's just a question of how to distribute it. I, I think it's wise to have risk based financial assurance regardless.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Rep Torzic? Rep, Rep Torzic, did you have a, we're not hearing you. Did you have a question? Going once?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm having some technical difficulties. But I appreciate the, the hearing and I, I've learned an awful lot. I'm up in Scoopla County, which is the legacy coal people. And again, you know, we've had the problem of abandoned mines and trying to repair them. And I guess we charge fees on every new ton of coal mined that goes into reclaiming the land and it kind of goes along with the, using the cogeneration is also a way to rebuild. So I, I think you're on the right track of trying to find out how to share this pain with the producers, but maybe even, I don't know, do you think we could take this beyond oil and share it with the new energy? Since we are working toward the wind and solar, perhaps they could even be part of the solution for the new, you know, take care of the old with the new. Would anybody be interested in tackling that topic?
Thank you. Thanks for that question. As, as mentioned before, we do have legislation relating to, to bonding with regard to solar arrays. I don't know if there were any other, any other thoughts on the committee, on, on the panel, on, on this issue? Okay.
Well, you know, it's, it's an interesting thought. I haven't looked at the economics of whether you can subsidize well plugging with revenues from renewable energy generation, but here's a thought. A lot of these old sites are actually pretty amenable to be repurposed for clean energy production. And so you can put solar panels or, or wind at these sites, especially not necessarily the very old orphan sites where they're just in the forest and there's no access roads. But if you have access roads and if you have electric lines and you have basically a brown site, you can put solar or energy storage or wind there and have, and that could in fact, help ultimately subsidize the cost of, of plugging those wells. And so there, there is a synergy there.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any, any further questions on this panel? Thank, thank you very much to all of you on this panel. We, we really appreciate your testimony and, and the information you provided us with. With thank you. Thank you very much. So our, our next speaker will be Tyler Martin, Environmental Energy, Environmental Care Coordinator, Cameron Energy. Tyler, come on up.
Have to say, I was betting would be Arthur Stewart here today.
Good bet.
Tell, tell Arthur, you're not on the clock yet. Tell Arthur I will enjoy his company and always enjoy his testimony. And he had me to his, his facility.
I remember when you came up. I was on that tour as well.
Yeah, that was a good trip and, and learned a lot. So anyway.
And we appreciate that, you coming up to learn about our industry firsthand, see it with your own eyes.
You treated me very well.
Yeah.
So, thank you. So, so far away.
Yeah. Chairman and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tyler Martin. I am the Environmental Care Coordinator at Cameron Energy Company, a family run conventional oil and gas producer based in Pennsylvania. We are a team of 50 Pennsylvanians, not a conglomerate, not a faceless corporation, working every day to, to responsibly develop the energy resources that have long been part of a region's heritage. At Cameron, I handle regulatory compliance and environmental coordination across our operations. That includes everything reporting production and working with the EP inspectors to planning erosion and sediment, and sedimentation controls, supporting new permit applications and identifying orphaned wells for plugging. Compliance is not just a job title. It's a full time job and a serious one. The reality of the proposed bonding increase, under current law, well bonding is set by the legislature. Under this proposed legislation, well bonding would be set by the Environmental Quality Board. The proposed bonding amount is $38,000 per well. Let's examine what that would mean for a company like Cameron. For context, Cameron operates approximately 1,800 conventional wells. Under the proposal, our bonding obligation would balloon to $68.4 million. Let me be blunt, we cannot afford this. No small or medium sized conventional operator can. Bonding at the levels required requires cash or collateral and banks don't issue surety bonds without dollar for dollar backing. We don't have $68 million in the vault. And no one in our sector does. To put it in perspective, the average conventional well generates around $1,100 annually in natural gas sales. That's not a typo, $1,100. Asking conventional producers to comply with $38,000 per well, well bond is like asking us to fly. We simply can't do it. Increased bonding doesn't just ignore economic reality, it threatens the very existence of responsible operators like Cameron Energy. Flawed data and misleading assumptions, much of the well bonding discussion has been based upon flawed data. When arguing in favor of the $38,000, $38,000 bond, the Sierra Club presented a chart claiming that Cameron Energy had abandoned 1,600 wells in a single year. In reality, every one of those wells was active and reported as producing to the DEP. The Sierra Club presented similar false claims about dozens of other conventional operator, oil and gas operators. The source of the flawed data was DEP's own database, which failed to reflect the submitted production reports. The Sierra Club later admitted its mistake, claiming the situation weird. But the damage had already been done to reputations, to public trust and to policy direction. This isn't just a data issue, it's a credibility problem. Cameron has found, reported and submitted over 400 wells for orphan status, yet DEP has failed to add most of those official, official to the orphan, official orphan list. And in some cases, has wrongly assigned responsibility for the orphaned wells to our company. That misclassification paints a false picture and obscure, and obscures the real issue. The majority of unplugged wells in Pennsylvania are truly orphaned. I might add, if I found 400 to the last presenter, I'm owed $100 per well. Without a reliable and transparent database, responsible operators are unfairly maligned with a real plugging challenge. Orphaned wells for deck, from decades or centuries past remains improperly addressed. You can see the attached graph from Sierra Club in the back. Our compliance burden, already heavy, already working. At Cameron, our staff spends thousands of hours annually complying with existing DEP regulations, including annual reports, site visits with DEP inspectors, erosion and sedimentation planning and implementation, submitting orphaned well candidates to DEP, assisting with new well permit applications, ensuring everything is tracked, recorded, mapped and logged. Complying with thousands of pages of regulations, including water quality, air quality, oil and gas permitting, endangered species and more. What is in place is already working. Cameron's core operations are in the Allegheny National Forest, where there are more than 12,000 active conventional wells. The A and F routinely conducts environmental studies of the forest and most recent A and F report concludes that 2,126 miles of streams in the A and F is the cleanest water in the state. In regard- In regards to well abandonment, Cameron is not only not abandoning wells, Cameron, like many other conventional operators, is plugging wells. In the past 12 years, Cameron has plugged 260 wells on our own dime. Most of these were orphaned wells, orphans of the state, not our responsibility. But we did the work anyway. We take care of our backyard. Let me be clear, this proposed legislation is not ordinary regulation, is extraordinary. This legislation would not lead to better enforcement or more responsible production. It would drive out the very operators who are doing things the right way. This committee advances this proposal and it becomes law, you will not solve the abandoned well problem. You will make it exponentially worse. Dozens of companies like ours will be forced to shut down, and the very wells we currently manage in full compliance will be at risk of abandonment. Not because we want to walk away, but because we'll have no choice. In closing, I urge the committee to consider the real-life impact of these proposals on the conventional industry, on families like ours, on workers in your communities, and on companies that are playing by the rules. Let's build a policy on accurate data, economic reality, and the true understanding of the industry's diversity. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for testifying today. And I will say this. Cameron is a top-notch operation, and if everybody in the conventional industry acted as Cameron does, we wouldn't have this problem. But we're really not talking about Cameron here. And I think Arthur Stewart, in a candid moment, in his previous testimony, has said as much. Anyway, a couple of other things I just want to get out there. You can respond or not respond. The legislation, I am suggesting House Bill 364. I mean, to be clear, there's nothing extraordinary about that. All that does is restore what existing law was prior to 2022. It just takes the law back to what it was a couple of years ago. There is no dollar amount set in that bill. It just restores the EQB's authority to make those decisions. And again, I just want to be clear, Sierra Club did come up with some data that was questionable, and that's in the rearview mirror at this point. You heard the DEP testify today that over six -- their records show over 1,600 wells have been abandoned since January of 2017. And they explained their methodology in their testimony. And, okay, that's what I wanted to say. You can respond to it, or we can go on to our first question, or Paul.
Well, I appreciate the nice comments about Cameron. We take a lot of pride at Cameron. But I will say, there are other dozens -- there's dozens of other operators that operate in the same way that we do. We are not alone in plugging that.
Agreed. But there are just a lot of conventional wells being drilled and some -- okay.
Yep.
Anyway, okay. Anything else to add before we move along?
Well, and I was talking about what the next step was. If you, you know, empower the Environmental Quality Board to do the bonding again, I am making the assumption that the bonding is going to go up to those levels, because that's what they asked for before.
That, again, the figure you said, that's a Sierra Club petition, wasn't what the DEP was suggesting. That's different.
Understood.
Just want to point that out. Okay. Anything else before we go on to Paul Takek?
You can go. Thanks for the time.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Tyler, for your testimony. I'm curious. You know, whenever you, you're a smart business person, you figure out what is the cost of ceasing operations going to be? So, you know, you did 260 wells last year on your own. Thank you very much for doing that, but I'm sure you did your own as well. What is, in your mind, the cost or the range of cost of sufficiently ceasing operations and plugging a well? If not 38,000, what is the right number?
It depends on the well type. And first off, we did 260 wells over 12 years or 13 years, so since 2012. And in plugging, so it depends on access, which is a wide range and is a long answer that I don't think we have time for. But newer wells are easier to plug than older wells, and it has to do with roads and access. So our new wells that we drill are very easy to plug. And then it's also access down the well bore, and the older the well it is typically, the harder it is to plug. So, but there's a whole host of other nuances there, so I wouldn't want to venture a guess at this moment, but it's substantially lower than $38,000 a well.
Well, I can't believe that you're actually putting a well in the ground without knowing what it's going to cost on the back end to comply. So, you know, with assuming good conditions, because you wouldn't put a well in a place where there wasn't good conditions, right? You know, where there are roads, where you can control the depth and the size and all the rest of it. So I'll ask again, I mean, what is the right number? Do you estimate 10,000, 20, 30? I mean, what is the number that you use when you're projecting ahead for your business calculations?
Far less than 10,000 to plug a new conventional oil well for us.
And those are your actual costs?
Yes, depending on the circumstances. Again, it's a wide range.
But, okay. I would be interested to know what that range is.
Okay. If the presenter wants to provide that, we will certainly get that to you. Okay, so we have time for two more questions, quick questions, because we're running out of time in this segment. Rep Hugh and then Rep Webster, and we would very much appreciate if you could keep both the questions and the answers brief, because we just have about three minutes.
Sure, yes. Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you're doing. I do have a question coming up of a small business owner myself. I always find that the experts are usually the ones best suited for closing something down or finishing something out. Are you able to bid on these projects as an extra form of income for your company? Are you able to bid on these products for DEP and actually shut these wells down yourself?
We came in as a qualified well plugger, but we backed out because of the complications that come with the current contract structure, and it made it too difficult for our company to do the work, even though we have the qualified people, the qualified staff, and the qualified equipment.
Okay. I'd be interested to see if there's a way we couldn't fix that and actually have the experts in the industry closing these wells down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Rep Webster?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank Cameron for their testimony as well.
Little trouble hearing you, Joe. Maybe just get close to the mic or do something.
Yeah, I'm trying. Is that a little better?
Yes.
And I apologize, because I'm mobile at the moment. So greetings and thanks across the board here. And a quick comment, as an Air Force officer years ago, I accompanied a congressional delegation to Valdez, Alaska. And we know the history of the spill there, and I would compare it to what I just heard in the testimony from Cameron Industries, that a well-meaning corporation can do this correctly. And I can tell you on Valdez, Alaska, they don't spill a drop, you know, and the whole system is sparkling clean. It's astounding, because obviously that costs more than less, you know, operations that have less of a standard, I guess I'll say. What I was concerned about, and wanted to ask if maybe we could talk a little bit about more, like whether it's $38,000 or $10,000 to plug a well, and that should be the price of a bond, or the requirement that maybe a legislature would set. I'm thinking of it as startup costs in an industry, or startup cost for a project that an existing industry is going into. And recognizing that, you know, that other energy industries, and we just talked about the bond requirement that might be in solar, are we making a statement about what these extra startup costs really cost, what doing it right really would cost in the conventional gas industry? So I guess that's my question.
Well, the law that this, excuse me, what was the HR?
Well, yeah, the bill we are talking about is House Bill 364.
Yeah, so that would undo the bonding requirements that are under the current statute, which does increase our bonding up to $100,000 per operator, which is something that we could absorb. HR Representative Vitali's bill would undo that. So we already do have some increased bonding over the last couple of years. But we have to be very measured, and it has to take a lot of input to decide what that cost would be. But like I said, it's a lot less than $38,000, but it's...
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming today, Tyler. And again, my best to Arthur.
Yeah, I appreciated that.
And we enjoyed both you and Arthur testifying.
Thank you.
So you're always welcome. Okay, thank you. And our final speaker, John Quigley, former DEP Secretary, former DCNR Secretary, my personal confidant, the source of much advice over the years, and my friend. John, thank you for coming today. Always great to see you. And we wanted to put you last, because we wanted to make sure you were able to respond to anything you thought needed to be responded to. So thank you, John. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, staff. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm a senior fellow at the Kleinman Center for Energy Policy, in the Stuart Weitzman School of Design at the University of Pennsylvania. So I was in that capacity and not wearing those, some of the other hats that Greg mentioned that I'm here today. Before I begin, I want to thank Kurt and the women and men of DEP for the job that they do and the work that they do every day. In my experience, folks at DEP bring their hearts to work every day, and they work in very challenging circumstances. And I just want to thank them for their service as a first order of business. In looking at the issue of abandoned wells, you know the seriousness, you know the size of the issue. We've talked a little bit and heard from previous testifiers this morning about the environmental risks. I would just point out that just last month, the U.S. Geological Survey published a study that found that aquifers in several Appalachian states, including Pennsylvania, present the maximum confluence of risk factors for groundwater contamination from orphaned oil and gas wells. So the risk is real, and the potential damage that the Commonwealth is facing, and the threat to public health and the environment is severe. And it requires a comprehensive approach to deal with the issue. And what I'd like to talk about very briefly today is what I think are six elements that a comprehensive approach to this issue need to include. And I'll just kind of run through them so that we have some time for conversation. Number one, develop the funding mechanisms needed to tackle the problem. The $400 million that the Biden administration provided to the Commonwealth is essentially a drop in the bucket. It's only a start, and we need to establish long-term funding, whether that comes from a severance tax, a production tax, or other vehicles. We're going to need to find a long-term source of funding. It is very unlikely that it will come from the federal government. The Ohio River Valley Institute has done some really good work on policy proposals along these lines, and I think that work is worthy of very serious consideration by the Commonwealth. The second element is to leverage technology to identify abandoned wells. There are advances now in technology that are enabling the detection of abandoned wells at scale, and you heard a little bit about that from a previous testifier, from Adam. In fact, that drone project that Adam talked about is great work. Pennsylvania needs to have a broader, ongoing, and consistent application of these kinds of technologies that will complement the necessary on-the-ground grunt work that is needed to find all these wells. So it's really a portfolio approach, but leverage technology wherever we're able so that the work can be done at scale. The third element is, we have to modernize DEP's information systems. And we've heard from several testifiers this morning about the problems, the inconsistencies, the incompleteness in DEP's information systems. And that honestly stems from years, if not decades, of budget cuts and inadequate funding. DEP's data systems are not up to the task, and they're not, the data from DEP, generally speaking, is not terribly accessible to the public, as somebody who's tried to do it, tried to get out some information from the outside. Some serious investment is needed in integrated data management systems at DEP to provide the agency with the tools it needs to do its job, and to provide full transparency to stakeholders and the public. The fourth element is, ensure the best use of the available funds that we have by embracing advances in technology. One of the aspects of the well-plugging challenge that has really not received a lot of attention is that sooner or later, plugged wells leak. That's the sad fact. Current plugging methods basically use Portland cement and bentonite gel. They've been used for decades, but Portland cement can degrade. Other added materials like bentonite can shrink and break down mechanically or chemically, and that can give rise to leaks underground and into the atmosphere. And then to complicate matters even further, once we plug a well, it's one and done. Well, because these wells could eventually leak, there's at least a risk, these wells are not being monitored for future leakage. That has to change as well. From a technology standpoint, achieving a permanent seal that is capable of withstanding subsurface conditions over the long term is going to require some new technology and leveraging geological processes to take over and provide permanent seals. And in my written testimony, I provided some examples of some of the latest research into well-plugging technology. I provided some citations. I won't bore you with a recitation of stuff that I probably couldn't explain anyway. But there is a lot of work, research going on about using things like nanomaterials and other approaches to improve the long-term efficacy of well-plugging. But we're not there yet. The industry has done research in the area, but I think it's been found to be lagging behind research, not surprisingly, on drilling and completion technology. That's where the money goes first. That situation has to change. And it's going to be very important for DEP to stay current on the field-ready innovations in plugging technology, and they need to be ready to incorporate those enhanced standards into well-plugging requirements in the Commonwealth. The fifth element is, again, technology. We've got to use technology to monitor these abandoned wells and wells that have been plugged. There is now methane detection technology, both drone-mounted and even satellites like Environmental Defense Funds, MethaneSat, that are enabling a pretty fine-grained monitoring of emissions from the oil and gas sector. And that kind of technology should be employed to monitor plugged and abandoned wells for emissions as a long-term guarantee that the job is finished. The final element is probably the hardest and the most important, and that is, we've got to combat the abandonment of more wells. The current bonding requirements are not adequate. The passage of Act 96 in '22 made the situation worse, even though the Environmental Quality Board never exercised the authority to adjust well bonding amounts, taking that power away from the authority. to adjust well bonding amounts, taking that, that power away from the authority, from the Quality Board was, was not particularly well-advised. So restoring that authority as HB 364 would do, I think, would be an important step in the right direction. Full-cost bonding would certainly incentivize plugging for the unconventional industry. I do think, as we've heard from previous testimony, that other solutions are going to be needed for the conventional industry. And the examples that Adam discussed from other states I think certainly merit some good scrutiny by the committee. But we also have to look at the subject of enforcement. This year, DEP has already issued or continued 228 violations to 62 conventional oil and gas well owners for abandoning and not plugging their wells. And that contagion is spreading to the unconventional industry. So far this year, DEP has issued or continued 49 violations to 22 shale gas drilling companies for abandoning and not plugging their wells. And in December of 2022, in what I think is a remarkable self-own, the previous administration reported that non-compliance with regulatory and statutory requirements was an acceptable norm in the conventional oil and gas industry. Well, that acceptable norm just didn't happen on its own. It's clear the DEP needs additional inspection, compliance, legal, and other staffing to adequately and effectively enforce the law, and frankly, not just the new oil and gas program. It's also clear the DEP must enforce tougher penalties for well abandonment, including increased fines, full exercise of its authority to suspend or revoke permits, and block new well permits for non-compliance. And that requires seriousness, intent, and frankly, permission, if not direction, from the governor's office now and going forward. Pennsylvania has a right, Pennsylvanians have a right to clean air and pure water under Article 1, Section 27 of our Constitution. And the Commonwealth has a duty as the trustee of our state's public natural resources to require this kind of a comprehensive approach to the huge challenge of abandoned oil and gas wells and many other environmental challenges. And with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Any, any questions? Yeah, I, I, the issue of, of staffing, we've been trying to fight that battle for a long time. I think the oil and gas program is at about 190 right now. And I think in 2015, they were at like 226. And I remember Kurt's, Kurt's predecessor, who was he?
Scott Perry.
Scott, just talking with him. And I think he even said publicly at a, at a, at a oil and gas advisory meeting, "We just, we're not doing our job well, we just can't do it." And, and he, he said, "We could probably do it on 226." But yeah, do you have any, any thoughts or further elaboration?
I have a lot of thoughts on this subject.
On staffing levels?
The last time the DEP was fully funded was about 2004, in Ed Rendell's first term. In the second term, we had the Great Recession, and the bottom fell out of the state's economy and the state budget. I was ordered as a DCNR Secretary to lease, in two separate lease sales, a whole bunch of state forest land to balance the state's budget. And then there was a rate on the oil and gas lease fund that continues to this day. But the, again, in 2004, the last time the agency was fully funded, that was before the advent of the shale gas boom. That was, in fact, the first shale gas well was drilled in 2004 in Pennsylvania. So whatever the high point was at the, in the complement level of the oil and gas program, wasn't enough. Wasn't enough then, and it's certainly not enough now. And given, as Kurt described, the complexities of finding and dealing with abandoned wells, the, the component has to grow very significantly. I don't, I couldn't give you a number, Mr. Chairman, here sitting today, but it's a heck of a lot more than they have now. Probably, I wouldn't hesitate to say that we probably need well north of 300 folks in the oil and gas program. And the additional resources, some of which I've talked about this morning, in terms of the tools they need to do the job, to employ technology, to take advantage of the technological advances, to find money, and as previous testifiers have said, create economic opportunity to put a lot of folks in the conventional industry to work in plugging abandoned wells. Looking at the situation in this kind of a holistic way, enforcement is not, it's not all bad. It's going to, it's required in part to define the scope of the problem. It can open up additional funding sources for the Commonwealth and create additional economic opportunities down the line. But the, the real bottom line is, there is a constitutional requirement in the Commonwealth to protect Pennsylvania's air, land, and water. And the agency is not equipped and not resourced adequately to, to meet that requirement at this point, and hasn't been for a long time.
Thank you, thank you. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, John, that was, that was great. Took a while to get you.
Thank you all for, for your work, I appreciate it.
Took a while to get you here, but it was worth waiting for. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we conclude this meeting, are there any closing remarks by the acting Minority Chair?
I guess that's me.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of had a little bit of a follow-up question that I get a chance to ask Tyler about, if that was possible. I, I think that we were talking about maybe two different things. I think Tyler was speaking of some abandoned wells that he had actually worked on, and maybe, you know, kind of on their own dime and, and things, you know, versus what it would take to plug one of their new wells that they would have drilled, and, and like a modern well. Because I know that I've actually seen some of the wells that they've, they've actually plugged, and I know that there's issues because, for example, some of the casing has actually been removed when they were doing scrap drives back in World War II.
Yeah, World War II.
Mr. Chairman, I just wonder if that's possible, if he could respond to that and if I was correct?
Yeah, I think, I think we're kind of at the closing remark stage. If you wanted to quickly.
Just, just real quick, if it is a modern well, we can recycle some of that material, so it would drive down the cost, so it'd only be cement cost and labor cost, so it'd be a couple thousand dollars. And, and you're right, Representative, I was mixing the two, which is easy to do on many levels.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Oh, thank you for coming. Okay. Then this meeting of the House Environmental Committee is now concluded. Thank everybody for coming today.